I call to all the regular council meeting. Ms. Cook, would you like to say her prayer? And Ms. Ebert? We gotta say the prayer, yeah, okay.
I have a long prayer, I guess I should've got it shorter.
Fine. Ms. Cook?
You ready? Dear wise and loving Father, thank you for the many and abundant blessings you have given us. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health. We need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Please graciously grant us wisdom to govern and understanding of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony, personal peace in our lives enjoying our work. I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give us an assurance of what we would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in around our city and our parish. In your most blessed name, I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome you to the Lafayette City Council meeting. As Presiding Officer and Chair, I would like to announce the following. This is a public hearing. To address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out the speaker form and submit it to the clerk prior to the call of the agenda item or you will not be given the opportunity to speak. Staff assistant is available if needed. Items for submission to the council should be handed to the council clerk, Ms. Veronica Williams, seated to my left in the middle. When addressing the council, state your name and title for the official record. The five-minute rule will be in effect. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed. The front row to my left is for media only. Food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium. Please silence all phones and electronic devices. Meeting procedures are by resolutions and not by robed rules of order. All documents with reference to meetings can be found on the LCG website. And finally, the council encourages your involvement in boards or commissions. If interested, call 291-8800, 291-8800. I just have to make one announcement right quickly. I just would like to let all council members and the public that's here and out here tonight, and I'm sure you guys have already heard that University Corridor Lafayette has been awarded $10 million. So that's something very, very important for the community and for the people on the north side of town that have been waiting for something to happen in such a long time. And I'd like to, first of all, commend our previous mayor, President Robideau, and our new president mayor, Josh Gilery, for making that happen. And there's a lot of other people involved in that. I can't name everyone, but I will be making a press release soon once I get all the facts together. For instance, one other gentleman is very important that brought in this money is Congressman Clay Higgins. And you have Senator Gerald Woodrow, Representative Vincent Pierre, and local people such as Monique and other people, her staff that work with her, and also the community in that area that played a very, very important role. We had hundreds of people came to these meetings in support of what we were doing on the University Corridor. And believe it or not, people in that area of town thought nothing would happen. And now it shows that you participate and you get the right people to listen to you, and it can happen. $10 million, and really, it's just a start. Again, I'd like to thank Mr. Robideau and Josh and the people that I mentioned earlier. They are the ones that helped us get this moving forward. Let me move on. Derek, okay, Mr. Lazar, you have something to say? Well, let me get to your announcements, okay. There will be a special joint meeting of the Lafayette Parish Council and the Lafayette City Council at 5:30 PM Thursday, September 17th to consider final adoption of the fiscal year budget, 2021 budget. UDC replacement public meetings will be held on September 22nd, September 23rd, and 24th, 2020. The following are specific times and location for each date. Tuesday, September 22nd, 5 PM at Como Recreation Center. Wednesday, September 23rd, 2 PM at Clifton Scheneer Town Home. There will be a town home meeting. Thursday, September 24th, 10 AM at West Regional Library. Due to election day requirements, the council meetings for November and December will be held on the 2nd and the 4th Tuesdays of each month instead of the typical 1st and 3rd Tuesday. Remember, due to the council meetings and the election, council meetings for November and December will be held the 2nd and the 4th Tuesdays of each month instead of the 1st and 3rd Tuesday of the month. There will be emergency city council meeting called directly following these meetings. Mr. Lazar?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I would just like to take a moment of personal privileges to extend my personal condolences, and I'm sure I speak for the council as a whole and the administration, to you and your family on the loss of your sister.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you for your calm and steady leadership throughout the first eight months of this year for what has been, to say the least, a very tumultuous time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council announcements? See, there's none. Mr. President, Mayor President?
Okay, I get it. No, I appreciate the kind word. The bill grant, that is what you're referencing, $10 million, that came from the federal government, a lot of hard work, but that's on the party yourself as well and the rest of the council members. There's also a group of individuals that worked very hard for that, and that's our Lafayette delegation, and which we've already... So, the project, and correct me if I'm wrong, is about $25 million, right? So, we have a few local dollars that haven't matched. The federal government came in with $10 million, that's huge. But we're still short, and this is one of our major gateways. This is an area of town that's been disinvested. We need to invest in there, everybody lockstep on that. So, I have some commitments from our Lafayette delegation in Baton Rouge to go and seek that additional funding. I'm hopeful, I'm very hopeful, that we can get the difference because finalizing that project would be huge. It'll be huge for that area of our town, it'd be huge for our city, our parish, so really, quite frankly, our region. So, I'm very, very excited. I appreciate the hard work of Mayor President Robideau, but also yourself, Mr. Chair, the rest of the council members, everyone in the administration, our Lafayette delegation in Baton Rouge, and also our Louisiana delegation in Washington, and of course, our planning department, our CAO reminded me, I know they're watching, so. So, good job. Nothing else to add, Mr. Chair, just appreciate your service, appreciate everyone's service on the council. Also, thank you to everyone for sticking around on the last meeting of the night and for your public comments. It helps us as a local government grow, so we appreciate you.
Thank you. Public hearings, Green Farm Road area sewer system. Now opening for public hearing? Chairman, please read item number five.
Open public hearing to hear any and all objections to the proposed sewer system in the Green Farm Road area and the manner of payment therefore. City Resolution 31, 2020.
Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, sir, there are no comments.
This is the time to speak about the proposed sewer system in the Green Farm Road area. You are reminded, the five-minute rule will be in effect. No debate or confrontation of statements will be allowed. So, there's no...
There are no comments, so we can move to number six.
Okay. Ms. Williams, any public comments for item number six?
Yes, sir, we do have public comment.
Okay. This is the time to speak about topics relative to the city of Lafayette that are not included as agenda items. No debate or confrontation of statements will be allowed. For efficiency and to allow everyone the opportunity to speak, questions should be submitted in writing to the clerk of the court, clerk of the council. The five-minute rule will be in effect. Ms. Williams, call for comments?
First speaker is Gary Munro, followed by Tara Fogelman-Laxey.
I got an internet social media talk show, and I was on it two nights ago. And I said, "We got some issues in this country with law enforcement." And what I said was, is if you don't address them, if you don't do the right things, then the youngster's gonna get loose. Now, whether you understand it or not, I get my words from the high power. 30 minutes later, two officers were shot in Los Angeles, California. You sitting on a pot of keg. So, I will say this here. I applaud you for what you've done the last two weeks because as a leader, you gotta step in that water some days. But you got some more work to do. Don't be like St. Louis. Don't pay a settlement for something that nobody's never been fired for. Don't pay a settlement for something somebody didn't go to jail for. As I talked to my police chiefs across the country, I come to realize one thing. And we had body cam issues in Houston last week. But that body cam was released. And the mayor and the police chief could not stand with the four officers that they fired. You look at your policy and procedure, your standard operating manual. If they violated any portion of that that night, which I saw the violations, I could see it. Do what you need to do. You are doing far better than a lot of cities in the country right now. A lot of mayors will not listen, they just do what they do, but not realize that when you guys have the ability to affect the situation, yet you don't, you affect other cities and communities. Think about it. What did all the other cities have to do with Minneapolis? They waited two weeks to do what they should've did the first day. You got a tough job. And some days, you just gotta step in that water. That shooting wasn't right, we know it wasn't right. I told it to Houston when it happened with the Chavez kid, it wasn't right. And then four months later, after we go through all the turmoil, you release the tape, and it wasn't right. If they wanna be police officers, the one thing they cannot be is afraid. They cannot be afraid to be in an African-American neighborhood when it gets dark. And if they are, they should not be police officers. But they also have to be patient. They also have to follow all the policies and procedures that are there. And if they have not done that, do your job. I'm gonna speak to you as a husband and as a father. Your children shouldn't have to go through all this turmoil because you ain't made an executive decision. You shouldn't be getting into them arguments with your wife because you ain't made that executive decision. Your neighbors shouldn't feel like they should be in danger because you've not made that executive decision. The hardest thing I ever did, Mayor, was fire my own wife on a job. I didn't get to sleep in the bed for two months, but I had to do my job. You got control of it. Look at it, if it ain't right, do what you need to do. And don't let these police unions intimidate you. The best thing you could do is don't take their campaign money. And then when you don't take their campaign money, then you can do what you need to do when these situations come up. You represent the whole city. Last week, you showed me that you're gonna do that. Make the decision. Don't allow what happened in other cities to happen to you because the day of us thinking that, "Oh, it can't happen here." Yes, it can. Yes, it can. Do what you gotta do.
Next speaker is Tara Fogelman-Laxey, followed by Keith Falk.
Today was a good day, the starting of justice. The family will be able to see that police camera footage for their son, Traefor Pelleram. What we also learned today was, is that there is a pending criminal investigation in regards to the three officers. And that's why their identities will be hidden or edited when they put together the police footage. What I find to be sad is that my brother, my community son, Traefor Pelleram, he was a taxpayer. He bought food, clothing here in the city of Lafayette. And his tax money, just like mine and everybody else in this room, is paying for these three officers to be home right now, the same three officers who killed him. I think that's disgusting. I think also, Mayor, Parish President, that if you have the ability to let them stay home, you should also cut off their pay. Because my community son's life has been cut off. That's the beginning of justice. Also, I am disgusted because usually after the end of every council meeting, and I want to make this public, I would talk to the interim Chief of Police and explain to him the issues that was going on in Quiet Town QT off of Alexander, off of Ma Street, about his police officers and the harassment of a 16-year-old boy, being tased, being cuffed by Godson, who's his friend, having to have guns pulled on him, et cetera. The same officers that patrolled the same area that killed our community son, Traefor Pelleram. If our interim Josh Gilery, if our interim Chief of Police, he's not looking, would have listened to me and my concerns and taken me seriously every single time I tried to talk to him, perhaps Traefor would still be alive. Perhaps those two 16-year-old twin boys wouldn't have been assaulted at the bowling alley, punched in the head, thrown against glass, climbed and jumped on by three officers while they beat him in the head, while his brother was in handcuffs, his twin brother, in motion because he saw his brother being attacked by three officers. So, they slammed him on the ground while he was in handcuffs so hard... Two officers did that. So hard that his shoes flew off his feet. And at least five officers involved, after taking off the cuffs of one 16-year-old and after beating the other one, made them go to Tropical Fish Bowl in the dark and wait. And those police officers didn't even have enough compassion or courtesy to call 911 to have those boys checked out. They left them in a dark parking lot. I want those two officers who handcuffed Jabari Celestine and slammed him on the pavement suspended also. These young boys also pay taxes whenever they go to the store and they get chips and soda and anything else. So, as they've been assaulted and abused, those three officers get to sit, two behind a desk, one suspended at home, and still get to eat off those young boys' tax money. If any of us as a parent would've done that to our 16-year-olds, beating them in the head, slamming them on the ground, none of us would be here right now. We'd be in one of those jelly cells that I was in at LPCC. What's fair is fair, what's right is right, and we want justice in the city of Lafayette. Thank you.
Next speaker is Keith Falk, followed by Wallace Senegal.
Once again, appreciate Mr. Josh Gilery on addressing the community's concerns, addressing the Pelleram family's concern by making a motion to allow the body cams. But, yeah, you can allow the body cam footage to be viewed. What's gonna happen after that? The officers can get fired, they can be charged and arrested. But what's gonna happen after that? Is that still gonna solve the problems in the police department? It goes back to the Home Rule Charter. Goes back to the Home Rule Charter. It's time to change it. It's time to change it. I don't know if y'all guys sat out and went through the Home Rule Charter and read it, but everything in the Home Rule Charter is not to support the city. When a mayor president and a parish council has more power over the city council and the parish chairman saying the parish is broke, but yet the city got this much in their general fund? But yet, they still have control over our city? That's not right. That's not right. So, it's time to do what's right. Call the charter commission back, and it's time to change the Home Rule Charter. It goes back to what Ms. Tara was saying. She went to speak to the interim chief, and he didn't address her concerns. By him not addressing her concerns, you get a young man killed. You get two 16-year-olds beaten because of police brutality. That's why we need a citizen advisory board with subpoena power. We need an elected chief. We need an elected mayor. We don't need a mayor president, we need a mayor. So, how long? How long we gonna keep coming up here and y'all just looking at us? How long we ain't gonna see no action? Another thing. Mayor protest the last Tuesday was outside the city hall armed. I was here from the time the meeting started till it was over. But yet, the city and parish council vote and the mayor president and all the security they had out there allowed 10 white guys to stand outside the city hall armed with AR-15s. So, are we still supposed to feel safe? Yet, there hasn't been no looting, there hasn't been no rioting. But yet, demands for no rudering, no rioting. Yet, y'all still calling for demands for that not to happen? But yet, we supposed to stand outside the city hall we paid for? And be terrorized? Ain't nobody spoke on that issue. So, are we still supposed to feel safe in our city? Our city? Now, we voted y'all in your perspective positions to do what's right for the people, by the people. Either that's gonna get done or then you start a petition to start recalling. And I would hope not to do that because I have a lot of respect for this government body. A lot of respect for all five of you that sit on the city council. A lot of respect for our mayor president. So, changes have to be made. They have to be made.
Next speaker is Wallace Senegal, followed by Nita Begno. We have nine speakers remaining.
Good evening, council, Mayor President. I'm here tonight to talk about quite a few things. I agree with that young man. That young man have a lot on the ball. But first of all, I wanna commend my councilman, Pat Luz, District 1, for all that he did to get $10 million for University Carter. I know he worked hard on putting this together. He had numerous meetings putting this together. And all who was involved with him to make sure that he got the $10 million that he needed. And like Mayor President Josh Gilery say, we need a whole lot more, you know? But he did make the initiative to make something happen on University Avenue because I think he ran on that on his second term to do something... Oh, his first term. His first term, he ran on that to do something with University Avenue. And I commend you for that. I commend all that had anything to do with him or helping him get the money allocated towards university. Now, my next issue is, I keep asking the council to fix the charter so that we could have an elected Chief of Police. All our municipality got elected Chief of Police, elected sheriff. And I feel that we need an elected Chief of Police to where the city and the people of the city of Lafayette could have a say-so in who's gonna police their city and not just certain people. Mayor Gilery, I appreciate you offering me to be on that committee, you know, to part a chief. I'm still debating on it, you know? At the same token, I feel privileged that I would have a say-so over who our next Chief of Police will be. But it's not enough. We need the whole city to vote on who would be the best to represent us in the police department. And this is why we need to change or fix the charter. We had a big election on fixing the charter. And look what fixing the charter got us. All these different meetings where we only had one meeting before. Now, we got three different meetings. And guess what? The city is the last one to have their meeting, you know? The parish is gone, you know? The parish have a whole lot to say in what we do. We tried to get a second on a motion one time. We couldn't get that and because we couldn't get the second, the parish had say-so over what we was doing. So this is why we need to change the charter. We don't need a mayor president. We need a mayor. You know? Put a president for the city parish, but Lafayette need a mayor. Bottom line. We have a mayor president and the mayor president have more power over the city parish, excuse me, than he have over the city. That's the way I feel, you know, and this is where it's at again. My name is Wallace Senegal, I'm a concerned community activist.
Next speaker, Anita Begno. Who will have a caller on the next.
Good evening, Anita Begno, I'm the CEO of the Downtown Development Authority. This evening I'm going to speak on behalf of my board of directors who have carefully studied the issue deferred earlier tonight in reference to congestion of sidewalks in areas adjacent to public roads. Our board of directors met this morning and so I wanted to share their perspective with you as we consider discussions moving forward, since this was deferred for further discussion. Focusing solely on its impact on downtown Lafayette, although if approved, it would be implemented throughout the city and parish wide. This ordinance prohibits activities taking place 36 inches or less from a roadway that contribute to the commercial activity of the downtown district and are commonplace each and every day in Lafayette's hub for business and retail. Activities like, and when I reference these, I mean things happening within 36 inches of the roadway on the sidewalk or on a bench. Running into friends and colleagues at lunchtime and sparking up a conversation. Waiting to pick up children from school. Sitting on a bench to enjoy ice cream with your family. Waiting for a table with your family outside of a restaurant. Meeting up with friends to plan a day or night throughout the downtown area. Waiting on an Uber or Lyft at the end of the night of live music entertainment. Stopping to share a few last words with lunch or dinner companions. The reality is that downtown Lafayette is exactly the kind of place for pedestrians to sit and stand in public spaces. The implications of creating a blanket policy that makes these activities against the law for anyone is very concerning. We appreciate the intent to reduce panhandling, as referenced by City Parish Attorney Logan the last time we discussed this issue. That is something that we have to deal with regularly in downtown Lafayette. But we believe it's important to use a very targeted approach to address those issues. And we believe that we should make sure that the laws already on the books to prohibit aggressive panhandling are closely examined to determine if we are reinventing the wheel and to help us communicate with the community who has a lot of questions about the ordinances already in place and how this would be different from those. We also recognize that this ordinance would give the Lafayette Police Department the ability to move crowds. That can be incredibly helpful at certain times and in certain scenarios, but it can be detrimental to downtown commerce and others. The overarching consensus of the DDA board members is that this ordinance is too broad and can result in unintended consequences. I am always ready and willing to continue discussions about how to make downtown Lafayette a more vibrant, safe, and business-friendly place. It sounds like there's interest in crafting solutions that more specifically address concerns. Concerns I know have been brought to you about things like panhandling in downtown from our broader network of stakeholders. And in particular, I know that nightlife operators have concerns about congestions during nightlife hours on the weekends, late at night. That's when congestion is at its worst. So I want to offer to you that we would like to have a seat at the table and are willing to work alongside each of you to find solutions to those issues. And this is where I'm getting creative because this is what I wanted to do earlier until I had to add this. Additionally, there are two downtown-specific ordinances that have been deferred indefinitely. The first amending the minor curfew parameters in the downtown district and the second amending the guidelines for open container usage in the downtown. I would like to make it clear that we do appreciate the initiative of the administration, the legal department, and the council to address these issues specific to nightlife in the downtown district. I would like to respectfully suggest that before these two items are reintroduced, we convene more downtown stakeholders to discuss the desired outcomes and the potential impacts of the passage of these ordinances and give them an avenue to provide input and feedback to you directly. I know some of them have reached out to you in the last couple of days. Additionally, the DDA believes it is important to address these nightlife issues in the context of a hospitality district that will have a tailored nightlife management plan that will take time, outreach, discussion, and iteration, and buy-in from a lot of different parties to implement. But our organization does believe that this is the right next move to ensure that we find the best, most specific solutions to the problems we are facing. We look forward to continue working with the administration and the council to ensure downtown Lafayette is a vibrant, safe, and business-friendly place. I'd like to thank you for your attention.
Next speaker, Jacque Miller. Mr. Miller, you may begin speaking.
Good evening, this is Jacque Miller from City District 3, which is even a favorite district. Tonight, I want to talk about what happened the night of September 5th at the bowling alley. It was about 10:30 or 11 o'clock at night. And I don't know about you, but my social media started blowing up with what happened at the, at the bowling alley with the police using force on the children. Now, if that is what our children see as what the police does, then we're in trouble because our children should see the police as a body not to see what they saw that evening. A week before, and this is to speak to the heart of Mr. Mayor, a week before you had said your children were startled by what's happened at your house. And I would have been startled too, I'll give you that one. But just think if y'all had been at the bowling alley that night, that would have really startled you guys. And I'm not saying this to be confrontational, I'm just speaking to person to person. And that's my comment. Good evening. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next speaker is Matthew Green. And then we'll get Mr. David Rubin on the phone. Oh, he's here, great. So you're next up to speak, Mr. Rubin.
Thank you, everybody. I live in Mr. Lazard's district. I want to say I'm glad to see you here tonight. I hope you are doing well. I appreciate your comments earlier, mainly because I was here two weeks ago to speak about the now infamous sidewalk ordinance. Unfortunately, then when it got taken from the schedule, there were not public comments afterwards, which I could speak at. So I was here until 11:30 at night, waiting my turn, trying to get a chance to speak with everybody. I'm disappointed I don't get to speak with the parish council also, but I'm glad to be here with you all. So two weeks ago, you heard person after person speak about their distrust of government, their distrust of policing, their distrust of the criminal justice system here in Lafayette. Front and center in everybody's experiences were these negative interactions and experiences from people with police, with the criminal justice system, and with the way they are governed. I moved to Lafayette three years ago, so I'm still new to the area. I still claim to be new. University that I'm pretty sure everybody here is a fan of down the road recruited me. I'm a member of the faculty in the College of Education. Coming here as an outsider, it did not take me long to learn much about this city with regards to race. It also is going to take more than the five minutes I have and as you can see from the people talking, a lot longer for that conversation to happen. And I'm glad and I applaud everybody for having that conversation here tonight in this chamber and out on the streets. I came to talk about the ordinance because as I can tell from many of the comments, I was perturbed by it. It's overly vague, it doesn't really seem to do much, in my sense, other than criminalize people for existing. And I think that's really important to take under consideration in this context. Because as we're talking about racial justice and as we're talking about policing and as we're talking about people's interactions with the government, what are we doing if we're creating ordinances, creating a misdemeanor for existing? Right now, I stand up here as a person, as Mr. Lewis noted, looks a certain type of way, that's in a certain part of town, behaves and does certain types of things. This ordinance isn't targeted towards me, even though it should apply to me because it's an ordinance for everybody. It's not targeted towards me. I wish Speaker Nican, not Mr. Nican here, but from the parish, was here because last, or two weeks ago, he said there was no fluff in the parish's budget. And in my head, I thought, so are we saving all the fluff for this ordinance? Because it doesn't seem to be much. I've heard person after person talk about panhandling as a major issue, right? Panhandling and solicitation of charitable contributions are protected, First Amendment rights. Right, like it's, so I come back to this concept of what are we doing to criminalize people? Right? How is it that we are making something that is not a crime all of a sudden a crime? Because one of those, it's a very small thing in this circumstance, but it is a key step in what we talk about, the way that systematic and institutional oppression works. When we increase the likelihood that people are going to have interactions with law enforcement and are going to have interactions with the criminal justice system by criminalizing certain actions, we end up making those disproportionals greater. I don't think anybody on this board, or Mr. Gilery, Mayor President, wants to an increase in crime. What you're doing with this ordinance, and I hope it gets taken off the books completely, just vote no on it and take it down and find a better way. Because what you're doing is you're creating crime. Plain and simple. You're making something a misdemeanor for existing in a space, a public space. I teach students in the School of Education about the school-to-prison pipeline. People who are familiar with the school-to-prison pipeline know that it's how our schools go about criminalizing students, siphoning them into prisons, and creating criminals out of children. I ask you again why you would want to create criminals. I also stand here knowing that this isn't a black-white issue. Let me be clear, it is a white issue. It's me, it's many of you, it's many people in the audience. The white people of Lafayette decide that this is an issue that needs to be solved and is something that we want to see criminal justice and racial justice reform, it will happen. It's not black and white, it's simply white. I'm going to end this with an invitation, if I can go over time for about 15 seconds. I'm going to end this with an invitation. My name is Dr. Matthew Green, I work at UL in the College of Education. I would love to have any of you in class at any time. Tomorrow at 1:50, we're having a class on racial healing. Going through and we're talking about race and racial healing. On September 28th, we are talking about the school-to-prison pipeline. If you would want my information, I can give it to you. You can look me up on the UL website. I invite you all to join us. Thank you.
And I think I have a business card, I have a business cards up here and he can email me the schedule of classes. Next speaker, David Rubin, followed by Brian Harris.
Good evening, Mayor President, members of the council. My name is David Rubin. The night is long, I will try to be brief. I want to talk tonight about two things. I want to talk about leadership and I want to talk about focus. Leadership means that you will do the right thing even when it's difficult versus the wrong thing when it's a lot more, when it's a lot easier. And it means that you will do the right thing even when it costs you a vote or a campaign contribution or a political endorsement or a preferred, or a headline in your preferred media outlet. And having and being a leader means that you refuse to govern in fear and in cynicism and in division. Governing is not easy, even in the best of times. Because the decisions that you make have an enormous impact, not just on the pocketbooks and health, health of your constituents, but sometimes on their very lives. And no one could have expected the specific and great challenge that this administration, that this council would face. But unfortunately, you don't get a pass for that. You don't get to say this was harder than we thought, so cut us some slack. You chose this, you weren't drafted. You have to lead. And the first tests of leadership are very simple. Listen to all of your constituents. Show compassion to all of your constituents. And have the courage and leadership to stand behind those decisions, whatever they are. Our city and our parish, our state and our country have a lot of problems, too many to count and way too many to waste time. People and politicians who seek to distract from what matters, who focus on easy targets, who play to our basest emotions, and who govern with fear and with cynicism and with division. So tonight, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we got to focus. Don't be distracted by unconstitutional ordinances that violate our freedom of speech and our freedom to assemble and my freedom as a resident of downtown to stand outside my home for more than a few seconds before I get in my car. Don't be distracted by pointless and frivolous lawsuits against a comedian. Don't be distracted by nonsense talk of roving bands of armed men supposedly infiltrating our neighbors from Lake Charles, seeking shelter from the storm. Don't be distracted by politicians who seek to blame others for their own failed leadership and who look for scapegoats instead of solutions. It is hard these days to step outside of our own bubbles, to truly understand what other people are going through. And it's much easier to talk only to people who think like we do, to retreat to our own safe spaces, but as you all know, you don't have that luxury. You represent all of your constituents. And you have a responsibility not to pit us against one another. You have a responsibility not to govern with fear and with cynicism and with division. You have a responsibility to show political courage. You have a responsibility to lead. You have a responsibility to focus on what matters. And I hope Mr. Mayor and the members of the council will do that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Brian Harris.
I had a really great speech written up and since it was deferred, I'm going to have to move it around, sorry. But this is the second time this has been deferred and then thank you, councilmen, for mentioning the concern for that. The first time it was deferred, I was able to address some of my concerns with the panhandling ordinance with Mayor President Gilery, who's a personal friend. And I think that some of those concerns are the same concerns that Councilwoman Abear and Councilman Lewis mentioned. And specifically, I believe that a lot of the talk has been about a 10th Circuit case. I believe that case is Evans v. Sandy City. The ordinance in Evans v. Sandy City was substantially different from the ordinance that was written today. The ordinance today would ban a number of things. Ms. Begno mentioned several things that the ordinance would have banned. Some more of the things the ordinance would have banned would be firefighters holding out their boots for donations. It would have banned children from operating lemonade stands on the side of the road. It would have banned council members from holding campaign signs on sidewalks that were within 36 inches of a road. And it would have been banned me from passing out pocket constitutions on that sidewalk over there, which is within 36 inches of the road. So I think that any ordinance that would ban me from passing out pocket constitutions, especially during Constitution Week, is clearly unconstitutional. The 10th Circuit has come out with another case on a very similar ordinance. It is McCraw et al. v. City of Oklahoma City. I have a copy of that, I'll file it with the clerk so that, so that y'all can review a copy of that. It came out August 31st, just a few weeks ago, so you might not have had it. But the point is this, any ordinance that you write that has the purpose of... But the point is this, any ordinance that you write that has the purpose of stopping a person from asking for money on the side of the road will be unconstitutional, no matter how you word it. Because standing on the side of the road and asking for money is protected by the First Amendment, by this constitution. Now, I'm not going to do it today, because we ended up going a little bit long, but I was planning on standing on the side of the road and handing out constitutions. It's a little dark, I think it wouldn't be safe. As long as people are doing it safely and reasonably, and they're not obstructing traffic, there's no reason to pass an ordinance. I think there's a little part of my speech I might be able to adapt here, let me see, So we all, as Americans, as politicians, as citizens, we have a duty to stand up for the rights that are enshrined in this constitution. The drive of governments, any government, no matter how benevolent, the drive of governments to eat away at those rights is like a river eating away at the banks. The constitution and the people who protect it are a levy against the power of that river of government. So I say to you all, you may be able to carefully weave around those levies, you may be able to top them in places, you may be able to navigate the narrows of the First Amendment and pass an ordinance that stops people from making speech that you disagree with. My question to you is, why would you want to? Every time a person is prohibited from speaking freely, every time an ordinance is passed, every court that rules that a restriction of speech is not that big of a deal, the levy is weakened. And the river of government threatens to change its course forever. It is a lot harder to take these things back and fix it than it is to stop doing it in the first place. So I ask you, if you're looking to review this ordinance, if you're looking to change it, consider that. Consider the principles that are enshrined in this constitution, and consider that a person standing on the side of the road has a right to say whatever the heck he wants. And I'll submit that.
Next speaker is Will Tealy. Mr. Tealy, you may begin speaking.
Hello, my name is Will Tealy. I live in City District 2. Councilman Andy Nocan represents me. So thank you to him, and thank you to everyone on the City Council. I rise today in support of Trayford Pellerin, his family, and the Black Lives Matter movement in general. To the Lafayette City Council, I expect you to react to the needs of the community, to pass resolutions and ordinances when the community needs them, to oversee our local government, and to step in when any department of that local government fails to meet the expectations of serving the public. All of these are needed from you now. Two weeks ago, Parish Councilman A.B. Rubin, fighting back tears, called on the City Council to pass an ordinance implementing much-needed police reform at the Lafayette City Police Department. He stated that he would like to see the police department have de-escalation and mental illness training done twice a year. I'm saddened that no City Council member has done this yet, and I'm saddened that no City Council member has taken up A.B. Rubin on the call to do this. Please do not use the fact that the state investigation of Trayford Pellerin's killing is still underway as an excuse not to act. We don't need the investigation to be concluded to know that the Lafayette City Police Department did not need to fire 17 bullets at Mr. Pellerin. Giving our police officers more training is not a controversial proposal. Literally, nobody could possibly be opposed to this, so why not move forward with it? You know, just earlier today, the city of Louisville, Kentucky, announced a $12 million settlement with the family of Breonna Taylor because she was illegally killed by law enforcement. If we don't give our law enforcement the additional training that Mr. A.B. Rubin spoke of, then we are failing our citizens, and we are continuing to put our city tax dollars at risk. At the start of his term, the Mayor President removed the well-liked and very successful Police Chief Toby Aguilar and his number two, Reggie Thomas, from the Lafayette City Police Department. That created a void of leadership that needs to be filled, and the police chief hunt that's been going on has been largely unsuccessful to this point. I bring all of this up to highlight the fact that we've created a perfect storm. The police department has little leadership guiding the officers, and now the City Council is failing to implement training that is sorely needed. Please, as quickly as possible, implement the twice-a-year de-escalation and mental illness training that Councilman A.B. Rubin asked you to. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Mrs. Veronica, the mayor wants to say something.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Miss, was that Mr. Tealy that called in?
Yes, sir.
Look, Mr. Tealy, appreciate those comments. Couldn't agree with you more as far as training, and Councilman, Councilman Rubin, Parish Councilman Rubin, and this is literally hot off the press. I have some phone calls to call, each of our council members, I've been working with the CFO, and it's, my understanding, we're about to come to the council with a budget amendment to recognize, I believe it's around 13 million in cares relief funding. And I had a, I have a recommendation, I'd like to get y'all's thoughts, maybe not tonight, because I know we're running late on time, but in the near future, at minimum, I believe we need to dedicate at least $1 million to start off, just to start off as a foundation in training. I thought Councilmember Rubin, and we can go with the subject matter experts to get some feedback on this, but I think what he suggested, we need to take very seriously. Mental evals, mental behavioral health, the de-escalation training, I would, I would, I've heard the term situational awareness, situational awareness training. Look, that's a good thing. That's, that's a really good thing. So we have people that go to school on this, train on this, way smarter than me, way, way more experienced than me on this. I just want to kind of throw that out there for your thoughts, for your consideration. I have some other ideas that I think can help in this area, but let me formulate a plan, so I can submit, submit it to you for your consideration. You can come back and forth, and, but I thought that was a perfect time, and I appreciate Mr. Tealy's comments.
Thank you.
First of all, my name is Madison Price. I'm the co-chair of the YDSA chapter here at UL. And to begin with, I'd like to thank the City Council and the Parish Council for the opportunity to speak, and I'd also like to thank them for making me wait for the opportunity to speak. I do generally mean that because in the extended wait, I originally wanted to talk about the panhandling, but it was deferred. In the time waiting to speak, it helped me to reevaluate and bring further conviction and reinforce my points that I'm about to bring up. Firstly, I would like to commend the city government for pursuing the release of the body cam footage to the family of Trayford Pellerin, in addition to, as Councilman Lewis mentioned, the allocating of $1 million, or I think it was $1 million, in the university corridor.
Ten, 10 million.
10 million, thank you. I would like to stress, though, or inquire, rather, about how those funds will be used, and if they'll be used to pad already existing contracts, or will to help, or will help to rebuild what is already there, as to avoid gentrification and other concerns as such. However, these fixes, or rather, these commendations, seem as a small appeasement in comparison to the other efforts by the Lafayette Consolidated Government, that to seemingly undermine a movement calling for social and criminal justice, specifically, the anti-loitering policy, or the panhandling ordinance that was deferred, and furthermore, the blockage of homeless shelters, seem like an obvious attempt to target activists and criminalize poverty in a heinous combination of political maneuvering. The terminology of the policy itself criminalizes anyone standing within 36 inches of a road in order to crack down on those who are most vulnerable among us, and is indicative of an almost unthinkable callousness. The original reasons cited for these actions were in response to the recent protests, and we even had a previous speaker specifically touch on those reasons, the issues of panhandling and the issues of, my apologies, the issues of panhandling and the issues of crowds. These are pretty words to summarize what is in reality, again, criminalizing poverty, criminalizing homelessness, homelessness, and criminalizing political activism and mobilization. Regardless of reasoning, the people affected by Hurricane Laura are now refused basic refuge by our local government, and our once welcoming door has been shut to those who need it most. Thus, I urge the Lafayette Consolidated Government to implement the following reforms, in addition to voting down the proposal. I do understand, Councilman Abear, about the vague concerns about these issues. I just now found out that it was deferred twice. If it's deferred twice, scrap it and start over. So the reforms I call, call for include the opening and incentivization of homeless shelters for those in need, whether that be due to hurricane relief or pre-existing economic disparities, the establishment of local freedom of speech protections, and the safeguarding of activist efforts for political mobilization. Furthermore, the establishment of a neutral, citizen-led board to oversee investigations concerning the sheriff's deputies and the police officers, in order to ensure the full transparency and neutrality of the investigation of Trayford Pellerin and any future investigations of police brutality. The reformation of police tactics to ensure that the police enforcing the law are indeed members of the community and have a vested interest in truly protecting and serving. The reformation of police training in order to prioritize non-lethal and de-escalation tactics, specifically, but not limited to, better health, mental health awareness and support. I would like to note that I just now found out that there, there's motion to fix that, and I am, I commend the City Council and the administration for that. But my question is, and really my point of inquiry, inquiry, is that would this have been done had there not been such political upheaval in response to this? Finally, I call for the defunding of excess funds from the Lafayette Police Department and Sheriff's Department, such as military-type equipment that did not directly contribute to the services of the community. And finally, representing my chapter and the community of Lafayette, I call for your resignation, Josh Gillery. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jared Eubanks. Mr. Eubanks, you may begin speaking.
My name is Jared Eubanks. I live in Mr. Nocan's district, City District 2. Firstly, I want to thank the overwhelming majority of you for the brave vote that just took place during the special meeting. Secondly, though, I want to echo Councilman Lazard's frustration with the earlier deferral. This is the second time people have shown up to speak to that item, and our voices are not being heard, and it's starting to seem intentional. I understand that this may not return, but I feel like our leaders should want to hear our concerns if they are truly looking for more information to shape this ordinance or the lack thereof. Tonight, we took the first steps addressing our burgeoning homelessness crisis, reallocating some of the HUD funds that we recently moved to LITA for small business grants. Not only has this program been stymied by slow processing times and restrictions that certainly prevent most businesses from qualifying, but they are largely redundant with the National PPP and state MSRP programs. Preventing homelessness is so much more economically sensible than trying to fight it afterwards. I'm glad to see we're beginning to address the issue, but the fact that most of it's coming from funds that were already in community development is disheartening, and I think disingenuous to your constituents. Move a larger portion, if not all, of the unspent HUD funds back from LITA to community development for utility and rent assistance. The administration has a proposed ordinance to solve this problem. It's built to criminalize poverty and homelessness. An ordinance like this can be used essentially as a widespread stop-and-trust law. If an officer stops you near a road, how can you refute that you weren't standing within 36 inches of a roadway? This ordinance is so vague that it doesn't only allow, but demand bias enforcement. In light of the recent brutal murder of Trayford and inhumane beating of a young black kid in just the past month, I don't think any of you can refute that there is racial bias in our policing. And knowing that, you have to acknowledge this is a tool that would only exacerbate such. And why is it so vague? Our very own parish attorney, Mr. Logan, said, explained exactly why, saying that it was intended to target panhandlers, and is intentionally vague to get around the fact that that's unconstitutional. If this ordinance were to be challenged, I think that statement alone is pretty damning, and it wouldn't take a forensic auditor to find that. Besides, even if it did stand up in court, is this really what you want, to flout the Constitution in our Supreme Court? And for what? Am I truly to believe there are no laws or ordinance in our state or parish addressing obstruction of traffic? Do you not have a responsibility to know the existing laws that would help rotate the effect of really infringing concerns? When it inevitably returns, vote down any form of this ordinance that is unlawful, unmoral, and unhelpful. We are criminalizing the impoverished during a global pandemic, national recession, unprecedented unemployment, closing shelters in our community, homeless families in hotels, over $1 million in back utilities, and devastation of natural disasters wiping out nearby communities. This is disgusting. Finally, let's talk about the grief and outrage rocking Lafayette. Regardless of how you feel about the situation, a dozen or more shots in the bath is outrageous. Regardless of how you feel about the situation, a family lost a son and a brother, people lost a friend and a neighbor. It should hurt you that the Mayor President spoke multiple times before he even acknowledged the grief of the family, and referred to those protesting this tragedy as terrorists in the same breath. Shortly thereafter, we all saw the horror of a black boy, a child, inhumanly beaten in front of a bowling alley. Don't wait for an investigation to take common sense measures. Support Councilman Rubin's idea in passing ordinance mitigating annual psych evaluations, implicit bias training, and de-escalation training. Our city police recently rebuffed training regarding individuals with psychological issues. Do not let that happen again. You have the power to mandate this. You have the power to establish an elected police chief. The administration's treatment of Mr. Aguilar and Mr. Thomas has done nothing if not like uninspired the trust of the public. Let's make sure we have a better system going forward. The lack of action by this council in face of these tragedies is outrageous. Let's make sure the next time we make national headlines, it's because we're moving forward. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to start by saying, we started out saying the pledge. I am a U.S. Air Force veteran. I served my eight years. I did my duties to this country, and I am also doing my duties to the city. I will respectively say that, yes, you are on the City Council, but at the same time, we as parents, we are children of God. Okay, I'll start by saying this. We have a problem with, I hear speaking of the panhandling. Well, you know, half of those are veterans. Their, their benefits are not enabled, they're not given as they, as they should. Me, myself, I've had issues with veteran affairs. I've had issues, I've, I've been helping people. I opened a community service group on behalf of Trayford. Many of you have seen me around with the bear. Trayford is, was one of my students at Blue Cliff College. I had the honor of teaching him cosmetology. He is, he was an aspiring barber. So that was taken away from him. And as a mother, and knowing that I took the time to be as a big sister to him, that hurts me. Not only is that affecting me, it's affecting my child, because he one day understands mother. I have to get older. There are people in this world that is not compassionate, that have no understanding and consideration to understand what's right and what's wrong. I share with my kids my military core values. Integrity first, service before self, and excellence in everything I do. That is what I instill into my kids, and I would ask that you understand that you, yourself, yes, you represent the parish, yes, you represent the city of Lafayette. yes, you represent the city of Lafayette, but this man up here, whenever we take these words to the Pledge of Allegiance: "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all," I would like to be, I would like to see that, not just say that. I'd like to see that with my two eyes and understand that me, as a parent, I shouldn't have to worry about my kids going outside to go check the mailbox and have to worry about them getting in trouble. I shouldn't have to worry about my grandfather going to the end of the street just to go put something in the trash can. I shouldn't have to worry about my uncles that are veterans, have served longer than I on the front lines. Two of them now are homeless. I'm helping people myself from the Lake Charles area. I took it upon myself to start the Shining Stars Volunteers Committee because there are homeless people. I spent $200 yesterday. I went and get groceries, clothing for people that were there. I don't know these people. And I just pulled up around the areas. They now know me. You understand what I'm saying? To say that there are people by their side, they can't say that. A lot of them, they have sicknesses. I tell them, "Go to the hospital." The hospital refused me. Well, okay, well, I'll tell you what. Let me see if I can get you some help, being a veteran that I am. That's the true meaning of protecting and serving. I know you've talked, spoken to Cory about the de-escalation situation. Let me know if you need some help with that. Because me, being a veteran, I think that we should obtain our veterans and give back to those veterans by letting us do what we're supposed to do: protect and serve. I want to know what's the meaning, and I want to be able to say that I'm a citizen of Lafayette, that I pay taxes, and I want to see protecting and serving. That's all I have to say.
Y'all have a good night.
Move on to resolutions. This is a public hearing, and speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule does apply. Chairman, please read item number seven.
City Resolution 32, 2020. A resolution of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the submission of a joint application with the Lafayette Parish Sheriff's Office, with the U.S. Department of Justice for a 2020 BGA-JAG assistance grant for the Lafayette Police Department.
Motion by Ms. Abear, second by Mr. Nocan. Any council discussion? I see none. Ms. Williams, public comments? Call for the vote to adopt the resolution.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Resolution 33, 2020. A resolution of the Lafayette City Council approving water and sewer services outside of the corporate limits of the city of Lafayette in accordance with Ordinance 30, 2015, LPUA, 507 Crestlon Drive.
Okay, motion by Ms. Nocan, second, I mean, Ms. Cook, second by Ms. Abear. Council discussion, Mr. Nocan?
Well, it's Ms. Abear. You just gave it to. That's okay. Can I call up Brian or Lowell, whoever's supposed to be in charge of this? I know council members, refresh all's memory, we had a pretty in-depth conversation about how to handle these issues that come up, people who do not live in the city of Lafayette but are requesting sewer, water, electricity, whatever. And we actually requested that LUS pump the brakes to see about, so until we can decide how we want to move forward with that. It's my understanding, Brian, that this person that's applying for this, they actually have already applied for annexation. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. They submitted a petition in June, but they're ready to, you know, get the water, the sewer, they're building their home or whatever. So they want the water and sewer sooner than, it takes three, four, or five months to get annexation completed, fully completed. So what we do in those cases, if you approve it, what we'll do is we'll have them sign an agreement with LUS. And that agreement says, you know, you've been granted the waiver, and it's in the ordinance, but subject to this agreement. And the agreement says that you won't pull your annexation petition while we give you water. If you pull your annexation petition, we go pull your meter, and you don't have the water and sewer anymore.
Okay. All right. Well, I just wanted to make sure my fellow council members were aware of that, and then also to reiterate that we did want you to hold any applications of anyone that is interested in getting sewer, water, or electricity outside of the city of Lafayette until we can have a meeting to decide how we want to move forward. That's all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Nocan.
Thank you, Councilman Abear, for answering my questions. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams, public comments?
We had one speaker who signed in, did not wish to speak in opposition to the ordinance. Resolution. That's it.
Okay, vote to adopt the resolution.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Ordinance for final adoption. We're moving along. This is a public hearing, and speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule does apply. Chairman, please read item number nine.
City Ordinance 78, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $84,075 received from the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department.
Motion by Mr. Nocan, second by Ms. Abear. Council discussion? I see there's none. Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 79, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the amending of the fiscal year 1920 operating and capital budgets of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing anticipated revenues in the amount of $7,129,789 from the Federal Transit Administration Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, Public Law 116-136 through the Section 5307 Urbanized Area Formula Program at 100% federal share for use within the Public Works Department Transit Division.
Motion second. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Nocan. Any council discussion? I see there's none. Public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Join the regular council meeting.